So this year, there are contested seats on the Select Board and on School Committee. All candidates who are debating this week, the candidates who are running unopposed, and many of the candidates for Town Meeting have generously provided the League with information about themselves and their candidacies. You may find these candidate profiles on our website at L W V Winchester dot org backslash a vote. So thank you, candidates, for submitting your profiles to the League. And thanks to those of you who are giving some of your time to be here in person, to meet the voters before and after our debate, both tonight as well as tomorrow evening. This evening's debate will be moderated by Nell Forgus. Nell is a trained League moderator and a member of the League of Women Voters of Sudbury. Good evening. The candidates running for Select Board are Anthea Brady, an incumbent, Dorothy Symboli, Richard Welch Jr., and Pars Bayani. They are running for two three-year positions. The rules for the debate are as follows. Each candidate will have up to 90 seconds for an opening statement. The order of speaking was determined ahead of time by a random method. After that, I will ask the candidates a series of prepared questions in rotating order. Each candidate will have up to 90 seconds for each answer. After each set of answers, the candidates may request a rebuttal. Should any candidate choose to rebut, each candidate will have up to 30 seconds to do so. Personal references about other candidates are out of order. After our final question, each candidate will have up to 60 seconds for a closing statement. The closing statements will be given in reverse order from the opening statements. Our timekeepers are seated in the front row. They will hold up a yellow placard when the speaker has 15 seconds left and a red placard when their time is finished. We will now start with opening statements, 90 seconds each. The order of presentation for these statements will be in the order that the candidates are seated here. Mr. Welch, we'll start with you.
Okay, I'm first, Lucky. Good evening. My name is Rick Welch, and I am running for Select Board with the hope that my 40 years of experience in real estate development and home building will benefit the town. I owe a debt of gratitude to the town, as my three children have all recently graduated from the Winchester school system and were very prepared for college. The sports programs, both at the school-sponsored and town-sponsored, have had a major impact on the development of their character and in preparing them for life. I would like to do my part, ensuring that Winchester children in the coming years and in the future generations have the same experience that my family and I had. I want for Winchester what most of us want: superior schools, excellent art programs, and the best sports equipment and facilities in the state. We all look at any publication that rates schools statewide, and I'm sure that we all look to see that we're near the top. This is what I do, and we all love the pride that comes with the high ranking along with the security it brings to our home values. Our teachers, police, firemen, and all Town employees need to feel that they are in one of the best towns to work in, and to get up every day knowing we support them and their contracts and agreements so they can maintain the enthusiasm they have always had to do their best for the town. These things are not automatic, as it requires dedicated volunteers on local boards and commissions, both present and future, and of course, the necessary funding needed.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Brady, you have 90 seconds.
Good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, our moderator, the JEC Center for hosting us, the other candidates, and everyone here tonight, and those of you who are watching at home. I'm Anthea Brady, candidate for reelection to the Select Board. I've been on the board for the past three years and served as vice chair for two of those years. I'm also a Town Meeting member in Precinct One. I'm serving on the ABC Board, and I've been previously on the Family Action Network Board as well. I have a second grader at Morocco and a future kindergartner there. Going into this election, something I think we say every year but is really critical this year is our budget. Going into FY '26, we do face about a $3 million deficit, and it's not because we've done anything wrong. In fact, we have very high operating reserves at this point. Our Town Hall staff are very efficient and effective at what they do in managing the work and the budget. But as we all know, in the past few years, costs have gone up, our experienced personnel's salaries go up every year, we have a critical increase in health insurance budget, and we need to address ways to manage this budget. Having an experienced Select Board is important, having folks who know what's happened in that time, how to address those issues. And the Board has already pursued setting up a State of the Town Committee so that we can begin to look at our approaches and needs for potential operating overrides and capital overrides. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Symboli.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the JEC Center for hosting this debate. I am a resident of Winchester for over 25 years and a mother of three adult children who were all raised in Winchester. I care deeply about Winchester, its past, present, and future. I am the only candidate who is bringing to the table over 20 years of personal and professional experience relevant to the position of Select Board and 10 years of municipal experience. I've been a Town Meeting member for nine years and a member of the Board of Appeals, I'm the current chair of the Board of Appeals, for also nine-plus years. I'm also a Massachusetts licensed real estate attorney, or an attorney that I specialize in real estate land use. I also, one of my children was also raised in, was also a SPED student in Winchester, and I had to learn advocacy with the IEP process, so I'm very familiar with the schools and what that entails. And I have compassion for all the parents facing those situations. On my role in the Zoning Board of Appeals, I have reviewed special permits, comprehensive permit petitions for affordable housing. And I want to leverage this experience as a Select Board member. My goal would be to engage in strategic solutions for long-term planning. Yes, we do have economic challenges in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bayani.
Thank you, and thank you to the League for hosting this event and to my fellow candidates for running and for their commitment to Winchester. My name is Pars Bayani. I have lived here on Cross Street for the past five years, my wife and two daughters, who will both attend Lynch School in a couple of years. Winchester is the only place that they have known, and it's the community that we intend to remain in and call home for decades to come. I decided to run for Select Board because Winchester is an important moment in its history, and the decisions that we make over the next few years will be very consequential. I believe that my background, my approach to the issues, and my collaborative style would make me an asset to the Select Board. I've spent the past dozen years in the private sector as an investor and corporate strategist at a variety of global firms. And before that, I spent five years in the public sector, first as a teacher, and then running the Budget and Capital Office of the City of Chicago Transit Authority. In that role, I supervised a $1.7 billion budget and gained a lot of experience around the key issue that Winchester faces today: how to deliver quality services and pursue long-term capital projects amid a constrained budget, and to do that while working with everyone from elected officials to employee unions to bond rating agencies. We will speak about a range of topics this evening, but my focus is on budget and capital, housing, economic development, and the environment. On my website, parsforwinchester.com, you can find much more detailed information in each of these areas. I look forward to our dialogue, and I hope that based on what you hear, you choose to cast one of your votes for me for Select Board.
Thank you. I will now ask a series of questions that were prepared by the League of Women Voters of Winchester with extensive input from the public. The questioning will end at 7:55 to allow for closing statements, even if not all of the questions have been asked. We'll begin with the first question, and Ms. Brady, you will be answering first. What measures would you propose to reduce or eliminate the $2.9 million budget deficit projected for fiscal year 2026? Please comment on cost reduction and revenue enhancements. Would it include some type of override? Ms. Brady, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. So in terms of our budget, we have about a month and a half before the budget comes to Town Meeting for a vote. So we're not really able to move forward in override in that point in time to address the budget crisis. To address the deficit, the Select Board and working with the Town Manager has been discussing ways that we can reduce what was a very large increase to the health insurance budget to try to reduce that a bit. But unfortunately, we're looking at, for the school department, is just a level services budget. There's nothing new to that budget from last year, so there's not room for us to make cuts at this point within that budget. And the Town operate is very lean, so we have, over the past few years, been able to make some investments in a couple of critical roles just to make sure that we have some continuity of resources. So I think in the short term, we're looking at using our free cash to address the budget. In the longer term, as I mentioned, the Select Board has already begun the process of a State of the Town Committee to look at when and what an operating override might look like, as well as how we address capital needs that are going to fall in the same point.
Thank you. Ms. Symboli, the budget deficit, you have 90 seconds.
So yes, it is true that we are facing a $3 million operating deficit for fiscal year '26, but we are also facing increasing budget deficits, projected budget deficits over the next 10 years, or seven years, I believe, is what they're projecting. So we need to have a long-term game plan in terms of how we're going to manage $600 million of capital assets, all of which need to be maintained in their current state of repair, and we are behind on that. We need to maintain our funds for capital assets and building and health insurance. We also need to fund our pension liability through fiscal year '27. So these are all very complex issues. I do think that we need to consider an override. I think it needs to be right-sized and well-timed. The previous override from 2020, our town was incredibly fiscally prudent in terms of how they managed that money, and they've extended it far beyond what was originally anticipated. So I would trust our current operations that they are going to be managing any sort of additional override monies in a very fiscally prudent way over the next several years. But yes, I agree with Ms. Brady that about we have to plan for this. It requires strategic planning.
Thank you. Mr. Bayani, the budget deficit.
There's no question that we are facing a challenging financial reality, and that between this year and next year, we're likely to need a good amount of free cash to bridge us over the $3 million and then potentially a similar amount next year. But what we need beyond that is a comprehensive plan that balances investment in services and capital projects and minimizes the impact on taxpayers. And so here's a few ideas about how I think we can approach that. First, we do have to continue to lead with efficiencies. We should identify places we can better use technology, that we can jointly purchase at their neighboring towns, that we can use assets like the transfer station to generate additional income. Second thing I think we need to do is take a good look at our long-term liabilities. Our pension will be funded next year, and beyond that, we do need to save some funds for retiree healthcare, but there's a portion of that allocation that we could use to address some of our capital needs. And after those things, we absolutely will need to go to taxpayers to come up with additional revenue. As was just referenced, the 2019 override, which took effect in 2020, was designed to last four years. It's lasted already six years. Inflation, as was also referenced, has been far, far above that with 20% growth in healthcare expenses this year alone. And that's before we even begin to talk about the expenses we're going to have as our partners on the School Committee come to us, and we continue to need to find money to put into capital. And we achieve level investment we need to tackle critical projects around our town buildings, our parks, playgrounds, and other assets. I do believe our taxpayers will support us when that investment is needed, if we have a comprehensive and thoughtful plan on sustainable funding. That takes collaboration, communication, and a lot of hard work.
Thank you. Mr. Welch, the budget deficit.
I don't automatically want to figure that we need an override. I think that should be the last thing that we do. I understand right now we would have to use free cash. I've seen that, I've heard the conversations. But for the coming years, it's more about raising revenue, and I would say that the development opportunities in the center and other parts of town, and the business opportunities in town is what our main focus should be and not automatically go to an override. I understand that's a possibility, but everything should be done to avoid that.
Thank you. Ms. Symboli.
I'd like to rebut. I just wanted to mention that in using free cash, we have a AAA bond rating in this town, and that it determines what the interest rate is that we pay on our debt every year. Our town has worked very hard to maintain that AAA bond rating. Moody's is, currently, we maintain about 10% in reserves, cash reserves, which is that free cash we're talking about. Moody's would like us to retain at least 14%. We don't want to risk losing that bond rating and then developing debt.
Thank you. Mr. Bayani, would you care for a rebut?
Yes, thank you. As I agree largely that we need to find a sustainable solution here. One point that I'd like to add about an override package is that we should do everything we can to mitigate the impact on our cost-burdened households, and we do have about a quarter of town that meets that definition. First, for seniors, there are circuit breakers and other programs. We need to do a better job communicating and ensure that all who are eligible are able to participate. The other idea I want to mention, which was first suggested to me by a former Select Board Chair, is the idea of raising the property tax exemption. We currently don't pay taxes on the first $100,000 of our home values. If we move that to $150,000, it could make a huge difference in mitigating the impact of our tax increases.
Ms. Brady.
I just want to, I agree with what Mr. Bayani said. I also just want to add, in terms of the Moody's bond rating, you know, the recommendation that we increase our free cash reserves policy, it's something that's been looked into. We have very strong management of the budget within the Town Hall, who has examined what are the right next steps for us to do to make sure that we ensure our bond rating, which was recently reaffirmed by Moody's. And part of that is Moody's recognizing the strength of the community to support overrides that come to them.
Thank you. Mr. Welch, would you like 30 seconds?
I agree that the top, I think the top two issues in the budget that need to be solved, or not solved, but addressed is the AAA, is the bonding and our assets. Those two things have to be first before we look at any other budget items. Those will cause issues down the road if they're not addressed as a first-line item in budget.
Thank you. Moving on to the next question. How would you prioritize capital projects, including the downtown improvement plan as now proposed? We'll begin with Ms. Symboli.
So in terms of our capital projects, we recently adopted a tool called VFA to help in planning when capital projects are prioritized in terms of which things come next. So I would say that we should continue using VFA to look at those capital projects. And obviously, to the extent that any of those buildings are historic buildings, we should look to the CPA funds to supplement on those specific capital projects that are either outdoor recreation space, like the Packer Courts, or historic buildings like Town Hall.
Thank you. Mr. Bayani, prioritizing capital projects.
Thank you. You know, Winchester has started to address its backlog of capital projects, but the fact is that we're currently investing at a rate that's approximately a third of the rate we need to invest in just to keep our assets in good condition. I think we have a very robust process to prioritize the limited dollars that we have, and I think our committees do an excellent job of that. I've met with them extensively, and while we do have the data and we have a very robust way to prioritize our projects, what we need is a five-year plan, but what we also need is more capital. And so what I would prioritize, and I mentioned one piece around long-term liabilities, what of that we can use for capital, I also think we're going to need to continue to find additional sources of capital. The Community Preservation Act is one of those. I think we're going to have to address some of it through an override that we do that is dedicated for capital. And what I would love to see us do is take the approach that we've done with the schools, where we actually come up with long-term maintenance plans for them. And I give the FPBC a lot of credit for that planning. Let's try to do that for our town buildings and for our outdoor facilities. We have large projects like Packer Ellis, we have smaller projects like playgrounds. I know Ms. Brady has been a big advocate of those projects on the Select Board already, but we need to continue to both do large CapEx and recurring maintenance in all of our assets to keep them in good condition. Our prioritization process is pretty good, but we really need this more capital.
Thank you. Mr. Welch, prioritizing capital projects.
I believe that they do already have a system for a maintenance plan for the coming years. If I'm elected, I've been in construction for 40 years, in real estate for 40 years. One of my first things I would like to do is to go around to each asset and give an opinion to it and see if the opinions of what condition they're in are correct, or what might be the most cost-effective ways to improve the conditions.
Thank you. Ms. Brady, prioritizing capital projects.
A lot of things have already been mentioned around capital, so we have the VFA system, which helps us to identify upcoming needs. The Town Manager, working with capital, has a five-year capital plan to address what are the critical upcoming needs. We were able to pass the CPA last year, thanks to the CPA Committee and then the CPA sort of analysis team that I co-chaired with Mr. Bentecourt. We need, as mentioned, creativity around our capital planning, so we can think of, you know, what do we look at? How do we fund it, be it CPA or something else? There's, you know, major needs in terms of just maintaining our roofs and the windows at the library so that there's not further damage to structures. Playground was mentioned, and so many people, I've presented at Town Meeting about playgrounds, and that's not just, I mean, it is about making sure kids have safe playgrounds and somewhere to go and revitalizing those, but it's also about making sure that families stay in Winchester when their kids go to play and that they are accessing the stores and the businesses in Winchester. And part of, as the question mentioned, the downtown improvement plan is looking at how we can increase traffic safety downtown, increase the availability for outdoor dining, and things that will really draw people into Winchester to continue to economic development and to spend our dollars in Winchester versus going somewhere else to do those things.
Thank you. Next question. How can we optimize the relative roles among the Select Board, the School Committee, and the Finance Committee in developing the town's annual budget? Mr. Bayani.
Thank you. Let me just start by saying I'm committed to supporting our School Committee partners as they make investments in overhauling various parts of the school system. You know, early literacy and math curriculum have been two of the most important ones of recent, but as they continue to, for example, look at special education, in part by creating a real tier-two program. And what is remarkable about Winchester is we've achieved our excellent reputation with some of the lowest spending among our peer districts. The spending comes at a real cost to our families. Beyond the underinvestment in our teachers and our curriculum, it places a lot of burden on families who have to pay for costs that in other towns are covered by the district, like busing, sports, and for tutors and any support that their students need, which creates an equity issue. I would love to pivot to the process part of the question, to work with our School Committee partners and our FinCom partners in order to really enhance trust, enhance transparency. I've met extensively with virtually all the School Committee members, with Dr. Hackett and many members of FinCom, including the Chair. And I believe we share a lot of common goals, and I think things like adding key performance indicators, adding more transparency in the budget, presenting at Town Meeting from the school side on not just what last year's budget was, but what it ended up being, where it was spent, are things that will dramatically enhance transparency. But all of that said, I believe we do need to continue to find resources for our schools, and the Select Board's role is primarily being their partner when those asks do ultimately come.
Thank you. Mr. Welch.
I think the three committees, the School Committee, the Select, and having joint meetings, I think in front of the public, that can, where they can share ideas and have basically a coalition to solve these problems in front of everyone so that everybody can see that everybody's working together, would be a step in the right direction.
Thank you. Ms. Brady.
So as suggested, meeting together with the Select Board, the School Committee, and the FinCom is really important. We've done Budget Summit every year, but we do that once a year in January. And increasing the regularity of those meetings, not just of the chairs of those boards, but the full, the full board or committee getting together to understand what are the critical issues that are upcoming, where, how are they addressing the budget, what are the practices that they're using. The School Committee has recently sort of addressed the process of the budget to make it a little bit more transparent, but also to push the process back, push the process earlier, which, the School Committee is actually very challenging, because when we start our fiscal year budget in July and we're asking for updates in January, schools have only been in session for about three or four months. I think we need to trust that the School Committee and the superintendent are the experts in the needs of the schools and that the budgets that they're bringing are the critical needs, especially with upcoming literacy curriculum needs, math curriculum needs. And part of it also is just communication. You know, we, overall, from our boards and committees as well as the public, need to understand, you know, what are programs that are coming forward? How does federal and state funding flow down to different committees so that we can collaborate with this information?
Thank you. Ms. Symboli.
So I would agree with the other candidates that communication and transparency is key. It is, you know, I did meet with the Chair of Income, and he had mentioned to me that the budget booklet that they were provided, you know, many years ago was anywhere from 25 to 30 pages. That budget booklet is now three to five pages. And yes, the School Committee is responsible with the superintendent for managing that budget, and I very much support them and think that they're highly, you know, have a lot of expertise in that area. However, I would love for the School Committee to be able to reach out to FinCom for additional support, additional guidance, to do some numbers crunching. Our school budget is 40% of our entire town budget, and that doesn't include benefits and health. So if you actually add that all in, schools is 70% of our entire town budget. Those are big numbers. We're facing, you know, a crossroads in our literacy and math curriculum. That's going to be costing a lot of money. That previous curriculum that put us in this situation was the result of big education. It's, the landscape has changed in terms of curriculum. It's big business now. It's being supported and backed by private equity. I think we all need to be looking at this and working together so that we can move forward and create the best system that we can, especially for our kids.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, and I think there's a lot of agreement in terms of the process and improving the transparency. I will say, just as a, to focus on the actual funding need, as a private resident, I've been one of the people pushing the School Committee to make some of the changes that were just referenced, and I've actually encouraged them also to go out and compete for state funding. There's $50 million at the state level that one of our legislators was instrumental in creating, and I've encouraged them to go out and compete for that money. But we still will need to have a local source of funds as well. And to talk about another area where Select Board and the School Committee work together, I am committed to New Morocco, following the successful project at Lynch, it's something the residents of that district deserve.
Thank you. Mr. Welch, would you like 30 seconds? Ms. Brady.
I think there's a lot of agreement on how we're addressing the needs of the schools. The literacy curriculum is sort of paramount, and we'll know more soon on that. The math curriculum is upcoming. Morocco is, as we know, it's the last elementary school to be rebuilt. But I think right now, one of the critical pieces to understand is we have about 3% of our school budget that comes from federal funds. That 3% of funding is likely to stay, but broader grants and funding opportunities have gone away and will not be available, and we'll need to make investments in the schools in absence of that.
Thank you. Ms. Symboli.
I just want to...
I just wanted to comment, going back to the original question, which is how can we coordinate, you know, the FinCom, select board, school committee, and other boards and committees working together? That's where sort of my experience comes in. I think it's really important to maintain sort of a 30,000-foot view, bird's-eye view of the situation. Yes, Morocco is coming online, but we also need to recognize that Swanton/Washington Street is about to be developed. And so we need to take into account the changing enrollment and all of that.
Thank you. Moving on to the next question. What would you do to diversify the supply of housing in Winchester, including affordable and low-income housing? How would you expedite current efforts to redevelop town-owned land? Mr. Welch?
So, I've been a real estate developer for 30 years. I spent the last 12 years doing 55 and over developments. Those are, you know, great revenue for the town. Obviously, all the tax dollars come in, and really no money, obviously, for schools and et cetera. But on top of that, the center, there's all kinds of opportunities in the town center with the, with the new station. We can do everything. We can have 55 and over. We can have 40Bs, and we can have new businesses and create something that's completely different than is there today.
Thank you, Ms. Brady.
So, I shout out to the planning board for the work that they have done in the past few years to address affordability of housing and move forward what's termed the missing middle of housing, which is units that are not sort of smaller, low-income, but not larger, single-family homes, but those smaller, more affordable units of housing. And the more housing that we're creating, sort of more affordable that that can be. I think the work that they have done recently with several bylaws that have, zoning bylaws that have passed town meeting for North Main Street and MBTA 3A, the ADUs are critical to helping us diversify that supply of housing. In terms of low income, there's been a lot of work for Waterfield, a development which will bring quite a few units over by the train station, once, once that's fully open. Washington and Swanton will address affordability. And then we have opportunity for some smaller, smaller housing, like townhouses on Cross Street and addressing 160 Forest Street and putting some affordable housing there. I think in terms of town-owned land, we just don't have a lot of it. So there's only so much we can do to redevelop it, but that might be, again, that sort of smaller scale. Is it one to two to three units that helps to just increase the supply of affordable housing?
Thank you, Ms. Semboli.
So, yes, we absolutely need to do balanced and responsible growth in Winchester, and that would include diverse housing stock. Yes, planning board has done a lot. We now have the North Main Street area that is rezoned so that we can see some growth there. We have Swanton/Washington Street coming online. That developer is looking to start the comprehensive permit process in April. So we'll be seeing that coming online. That also includes some commercial real estate. And then Waterfield is still in the works. I think we need to make the process as efficient and friendly as possible to developers. I really want to support local developers who are trying to build smaller town home styles, like the one that's on Cross Street, that is like nine-town home-style units. I'd like to see more of that through town. I think we can also work with the planning board to rezone some other areas to allow for those, that style of housing and multifamily. I think we already have had some missed opportunities, but let's not let anything else go by. As far as town-owned land, I think we could maybe, I don't, we'll have to see how the school situation plays out. I mean, Mystic School might be an opportunity. You know, where we're building new schools, we might be able to reallocate some of our resources in that way. Lastly, I would encourage us to find parking in Winchester, either create some satellite parking with like a local transportation service, or some other parking ramp for residents.
Thank you. Mr. Bayani?
Thank you. The, you know, the present opportunity around town-owned land really is around Waterfield and Washington's one, which is now town-owned land. Those projects have, you know, complicated reasons they are where they are, but both will eventually move forward. Waterfield needs actually state funding, and Water, Washington's one requires some environmental remediation. So I believe both are actually, at this point, moving forward. Beyond that, I tend to agree with the other candidates. There's not an enormous amount of other town-owned land that we can necessarily use. I do agree a great deal with what Ms. Brady said around the planning board. They have done a great, a great job really leading us forward around the MBTA Communities Act, around the North Main Street rezoning, which really kind of was an overlay on that, and complying ultimately with the Affordable Homes Act, the state legislation that legalizes ADUs by right. All of those will, will help with, with the, you know, objective here, which is to, which is to develop housing, but to do it in a way that's design-centric and sustainable. I agree with Ms. Semboli around some of the projects, particularly on Cross Street. I think there's other projects, such as one on the entrance to Morocco. And I want to talk about that one for a moment because it's a small development, four units. And, you know, our former planning chair has pointed out, we could wait, if we have to develop to comply with, with state law, roughly 40 units a year. We could do one of two things. We could do 10 small units, small developments of four units a year, spread around town that are design-centric, or we could wait every three years and do one giant 120-unit development. I think we would all prefer the former. And what I would love to do on the select board is to partner with both planning board and ZBA to see how we can create a real pipeline of modest projects like the one going in by Morocco.
Thank you. Next question. What would you do to bring more economic and social vitality to the town? Beginning with Ms. Brady.
So, one of the things I already mentioned is the revitalization of our playgrounds. So through working with capital and through town meeting, a couple of years ago, we moved forward redoing the Leonard Field and McDonald Field playgrounds. And that's just, we have a lot of families who are here, whose kids go to school here and who go out of town to get their kids access to playgrounds because what, what we have locally is, is just not cutting it. And we do that, and then we get coffee, and we get ice cream, and we wander around. And bringing that back to Winchester and letting people stay within town to, to do their recreation and add on sort of that sort of fun thing helps to bring economic vitality to town. I think also, it was mentioned by Ms. Semboli, transportation. So downtown is walkable, but getting downtown can be hard. And getting access to come in from down Washington Street or from sort of the area by the farm and being able to increase bringing people into town without, you know, having to drive in and park your car and drive around can be really helpful. And I think you're just in terms of socially, and we're here at the Jack Center, which is an excellent service for seniors. We have the farmer's market that happens in town, and bringing back kind of like the third space idea can help us to increase that.
Thank you. Ms. Semboli?
So, it's, it's no surprise that businesses, some businesses have struggled in our town center. And a lot of that has to do with parking and just having parking in general. So, one suggestion that I would like to make is for us to do the parking app like Lexington Center has. We could have some spaces that are sort of free for 15 minutes or 30 minutes like Belmont Center has, so you can run in and out of CVS. And then use the parking app for other states. It would bring in a small amount of revenue, and it would actually motivate people to move those cars in and out and free up that space for other people. Like I mentioned, we, I truly believe we need to have a satellite parking transportation system. Not a huge transportation system, maybe three stops, but especially for, as Main Street gets developed, I mean, to walk from all the way up on North Main Street down into the town center, it would be really super helpful if we had a local shuttle service to bring those people, to bring folk into the town center and, you know, and help support our businesses. The other reason satellite parking would be really important in how it leads to economic development in the town is for the business's employees. The Waterfield lot was previously used for those employees. That lot is going to now be developed, and those employees have no place to park. So we really need to think about how we're going to support our businesses in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bayani?
Thank you. You know, I've talked to a lot of people about this question, the Winchester Chamber, a number of business owners, and I just sort of have a few observations, really based on the experience of our business owners in town. First, I do agree with Ms. Brady about the idea of keeping families and keeping seniors and others in the town center, especially on the weekends and the spillover effect that that has on our local businesses. And I think that's very important. A few additional points. One question that, you know, that they all have, of course, is the real estate, you know, tax system. I think it's important, given the size of our commercial and industrial spaces, that we don't shift the burden to them. And I think that that is one piece that we just, communicating certainty on that is important to continue to encourage businesses to want to relocate here. I would also, we talked about the North Main Street overlay district. I think encouraging mixed-use development, where it's a combination of residential and commercial, it drives natural foot traffic to businesses, is very important, you know, for folks to be able to walk through the area, particularly in the town center. And the last piece I would mention is that, is that the process of opening a business, we've had a number of restaurants and other businesses open in the, in the past year or in the past six months even, some of which are still pending. That whole process around approvals and permits and applications, much of that is necessary, particularly some of the board of health steps. But there may be things we can do around use of technology and, and streamlining processes through Town Hall. Because when you talk to business owners, all of them will, will point to the approval process as something that Winchester can do better on and make us really more of a magnet for businesses that are looking to open here.
Thank you, Mr. Welch.
Going back to the opportunities in the center, I think we can have, kind of goes back to the question before, but I don't agree that we have limited areas to build on. I think the center can take a lot of additional housing. I think we have, we've spent, I think, a lot of time in a short period on, you know, specifically 40Bs. But I think it's time we build some housing downtown for, you know, for seniors, for Winchester seniors especially, so they can stay in town and sell their homes and maybe go into something less expensive. I think we can certainly add businesses when we add housing. And I'd like to see shuttles from different parts of town that can take us downtown so more people in town can, can use that area.
Thank you. This will be our last question. Will you propose and support ending the use of anticoagulant rodenticides on town property with a goal of protecting birds of prey? Would you support also prohibiting it on private property in town? Ms. Semboli?
Absolutely, yes and yes. I don't have much to say on that other than the biotechnologies are there, there is birth control, there, there's a lot of different things that we can be using other than anticoagulants that are really a risk to our wildlife, our birds of prey. I mean, you know, we've seen, you know, the, right now, there's three young bald eagles that are out on Mystic Lake, juveniles. I mean, it would just be so tragic to see one of the, you know, one or any of them get sick and die because, you know, people are using the anticoagulants to control the mice and rat populations. So I think we definitely need to look at some alternatives.
Thank you. Mr. Bayani?
Thank you. And I may broaden the question slightly as well. I agree with Ms. Semboli that those rodenticides are antiquated, and there's other ways of controlling rodent populations. Carbon dioxide's another one, in addition to some of the items she mentioned. Let me just take a bit of a step back, though, and maybe address some of the broader environmental questions the town has before us. You know, I'm a former Massachusetts Sierra Club board member. I really endorse a lot of the moves we've made towards sustainability as a town. The Climate Action Plan, the work of our advisory committee, the great work to make a, you know, Lynch not just an electric, fully-electric school, but also have onsite solar. And I also endorse, and I've talked about this on my website, Winchester becoming a climate leader. It would put us in the top 10% of cities and towns in Massachusetts, we're only going to pick about 40. And we've done the hardest steps to get there. We hope there's only two more left. And that would also unlock hundreds of thousands of dollars a year of additional capital, capital funding that would come to Winchester. I would also just say our conservation mission, Wedge Pond Group, they're doing extraordinary work on a whole range of conservation priorities around stormwater management, tree canopy, and just generally looking after the health of our residents. So I agree on the rodenticide point. I think broadly speaking, the sustainability initiatives are very valuable to Winchester.
Thank you. Mr. Welch?
Definitely no, and no, as Dorothy said. The eagle that, the eagles that she mentioned, I've seen, I have a building in Medford Square that the same eagle would fly back and forth from Winchester to Medford. I watched him for a long time, and he'd be the first thing I was thinking of under that, and of course, other birds. So I would say absolutely not.
Thank you, Ms. Brady.
I would certainly propose and support using non-ESCards for semi-property. I know we've made some investments led by the Climate Action Committee, particularly sort of in testing out at the community garden over by the farm. And it supports us on private property as well. I think there's an opportunity there, though, like some other cities in town are doing, that if we are going to change people's behavior, that we need to support that and to say, here's, here's how the town is going to subsidize this process or make it easier because, you know, we can't, you know, hate to say it, but effectively it's a non-funded mandate to ask our residents to, to do something without providing them any support in getting there. It's, you know, critical, we have the bald eagles, we have Wright Lock Farm. We're actually at a presentation about owls at the farm, and, you know, we don't see them at night, but we have the, I think it's important that we're addressing these. The Climate Action Advisory Committee at CONCOM, we have some high school volunteers who are fantastic and driven, and I think climate has been a great way to get them engaged. And so I also, you know, look for opportunities, especially with that committee, of seeing how we can get younger residents involved in the issues that matter to them in town.
Thank you, Ms. Semboli.
I just want to clarify that I, I said that I supported eliminating the use of the anticoagulants.
Thank you.
Okay. And the only other thing I wanted to mention is that as Winchester grows and we have more restaurants and that are generating more food waste, that it's also important to reach out to those restaurants and work with them so that they're also not using the anticoagulants.
Thank you. Mr. Bayani, would you like any extra time? No, thank you. Mr. Welch? Ms. Brady? All right, thank you. We will now ask the candidates for their closing statements. You have up to 60 seconds each. We'll begin with Mr. Bayani.
Thank you to the League for hosting the event, to my fellow candidates, and to all the residents here and at home watching. I want to end with a note about one of the great parts of running for select board, and that's spending time with a very wide range of people whose impact will be felt in Winchester for years, and actually for decades. I look at the work of the Board of Health and the Coalition, what they're doing on tobacco and alcohol prevention, work of the Conservation Committee that I mentioned, groups that are looking at stormwater, tree canopy, Wedge Pond, Pacrelles, what capital planning, EFPPC, and field management have done for long-range planning of our schools and municipal facilities. And these are just a few of many, many examples. I'm running because I feel my financial and policy background will serve Winchester well, but most of all because my style is to collaborate and to enable our town's formidable volunteers to collectively drive us forward. For those reasons, I hope you'll cast a vote for me on March 22nd.
Thank you. Ms. Semboli?
Why am I running? I'm running because I have been involved in this community for over 20 years and in municipal governance for nearly 10 years. I, in town meeting, we see things at the very end of a whole, long process. I want to get in on the earlier stages. I have some creative vision. I just can't watch anymore. I want to talk about careful, common-sense solutions to our budget issues that are barreling towards this town, our operating deficit, our capital management plan, support excellence in our schools, and continue to support our teachers and our staff, and really examine some and help school committee examine some of the SPED and Tier Two support programs. I want to support Dr. Hackett and the school committee in managing their budget by facilitating our relationships with FinCom and obviously bring in new literacy and math curriculum. We also need balanced and responsible growth. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Brady?
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters and to fellow candidates. I hope those of you watching- those of you watching the debate have gotten a deep review of our priorities. I hope I've earned your vote, both through what I've said tonight, as well as my previous record and my approach to our upcoming needs, like the budget and the needs of our seniors, students, and families. A few things that I want to highlight that haven't come up from the past three years. We had a great opportunity in ARPA funding that the town received, and I helped to create a process and distribute $300,000 in community ARPA grants to organizations within town. I've done a lot of work collaborating across boards and committees, understanding what the needs are, coming through School Committee, Capital, working with the Community Preservation Act Study Committee. One thing that's big in Winchester is traffic and pedestrian safety. We've made a number of improvements at Cross and Forest Streets, and I helped to mobilize the residents in that area to come to the Select Board hearing. And so I hope to continue to mobilize our residents as a Select Board member.
Thank you. Mr. Welch?
You had the opportunity to listen to all the candidates tonight, and I have to tell you that I've, after meeting them, after reading about them, looking at their resumes, resumes, the town can't go wrong, no matter what happens in the election. These are good people, talented people, and I think we're lucky that this, that they are running. I hope you'll consider me giving you, why I give two votes, as I believe my unique development and building experience will help the town in now and in the coming years. In the past, I have enjoyed the experience of being on the Planning Board for two terms, and I would very much look forward to serving the town as a member of the Select Board. And a little off-script, I want to state again how I think the town center can be developed. I think the incentive for developers is that they get the opportunity to build in Winchester. It's rare. There's not, certainly not a lot of land, but having been on the other side of development, I think we can do better with negotiating with developers and getting a better deal for the town.
Thank you. Thank you to you all for participating in this debate.
So, thank you so much to the Select Board candidates for showing commitment to our community by running for public office and for participating in this debate. And thank you now for moderating the debate. On behalf of the League, I have a number of others I would like to thank. First of all, thank you to the members of the public who sent us suggestions for the questions tonight. Thank you to the Cummings Foundation for generously supporting this event, and to the JNC Center for collaborating with us on the use of this space. We thank WINCAM for producing this event and remind you that the debate can be viewed on WINCAM on demand. I'm back. No, I'm not. Is it on now? Okay, great. Okay. Continuing with my thank yous, especially thank you to the Town Clerk's Office and the election workers for organizing a safe, orderly, and inclusive election. We acknowledge contributions by a number of League volunteers who help publicize, plan, and carry out these debates, as well as organize and publish the online candidate voter guides on our website. And mostly, we thank you, the voters, for exercising your right to vote and having your voices heard. Early voting will be held at Town Hall beginning Saturday, March 15, and will continue on Monday, March 17 through Friday, March 21. Election Day voting will be held in the Winchester High School cafeteria, and that will be on Saturday, March 22 from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. I was given a little note that's down there, so I'm going to wing it, but I understand that there are a number of positions and boards in town that are currently, do not have candidates. So if you are interested in mounting a writing campaign, you can contact the Town Clerk and certainly begin that communication. Finally, you're certainly welcome to stay after. We formally adjourned to mingle with neighbors and candidates, but we ask you to be mindful of the time as this space closes promptly at 8:30 p.m. We do encourage you to return tomorrow at 6:30 p.m. for further candidate meet and greet time, as well as to hear School Committee debate. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.